For the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, verity, and just this ground.
Full call of attendance, please.
Done.
Approval of the agenda. I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of the agenda with flexibility.
移到
Moved by Director Domann.
Second.
Second by Director Peterson. Discussion. I've asked for flexibility so that one of our speakers can go earlier in the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Presentations and recognition. Oh, sorry. Approval of the consent agenda. Thank you. Do you have a motion?
移到
By Director Peterson.
Second.
Second by Director Regan. Discussion. I would like to point out that we are pleased to recognize in our, in the agreement included in the consent agenda is the MEA Teachers Union contract. We are thankful for the shared and committed, continued commitment to partnering in the best interests of our students and staff. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now presentations. Director Pierce is going to come and talk a little bit about our honorees.
Alright, good evening, Board. My name's Tony Pierce. I'm the Director of Student Support Services and tonight I have the pleasure and honor of recognizing two of our high school teachers, Trina Noble and Jody Tester, who are over here. Let's see if my clicker's working. Is on. Can you help me out a little bit? Awesome. Okay. So what we have here are some, just, I thought I'd start off with some of that hard data that we have. Trina Noble has been a teacher for 34 years. She currently teaches special education at the high school. Both of these individuals are special ed teachers. They primarily case manage students with emotional and behavior disorders. So that's their overall, but as you'll see, they definitely, their reach expands. So, back to Trina, 34 years in education. She has been at Mod Amedai for 11 years. During that time, she has also taken on assistive coaching with our adaptive softball team. Jody Tester has also been in education for 34 years, and if you do the math on that, it's a lot of years between the two of them, and it's a ton of expertise that they bring to their classroom. Jody has spent 26 years in Mod Amedai. She has worn a lot of hats during this time. She's been at the high school, Mod Amedai Area Learning Center. Most recently, she was at Passages prior to moving back to the high school, assistant and head girls track coach, and she was also, she's currently the, I think, moving into assistant this year. Head, moving, alright, sorry. That's a big distinction. She's doing that, and then she formerly was the middle school across country and track coach. So now we're moving into some of those other pieces that's really at the heart of what they do, and I wanted to highlight these two individuals tonight because of their work within the strategic plan. One of the goals of the high school team was to really increase the work experience and the transitional experiences for students with disabilities at our high school, and Trina and Jody have really led the way on it, on expanding those horizons and working with their team to create those opportunities for students. I'm going to read this quote here. This is from an 11th grade student. It says, "They helped me get connected with 916 classes. They are great teachers. They support my decisions. Everything is great about them." And if you look at this slide here, when we talk about agency, we're really trying to capitalize on the students' passions and interests and what that could lead for life after Mod Amedai High School. And up here, this is all places that our students are working or have worked or are gaining experiences. So we have students, "Feed my starving children." We have students at Discount Tire, students at Fleet Farm, students working at Coles, Second Harvest. I put the Mod Amedai symbol, logo on there. We have students working in our cafeteria for food service, which is a new experience that was created this year. We have the Presbyterian Home Services, and I put the 916 Career in Tech, Diesel Mechanics, EMT, Nursing, Cosmetology, Travel and Entrepreneurship, Computer Science, Animal Science. Those are all programs that our students are currently in or have been in recently. Expanding our offerings to our special ed students and to go beyond the walls of Mod Amedai High School has just been, I mean, outstanding why on, for some of our students on why they come to school. They're coming to school because they get to pursue these interests. And Jody and Trina not only work, they don't work from a menu, so when students come to them, they don't say, "Well, these are the opportunities we have available for you." They get to know the students. They work with the students, and then they try to tailor opportunities that are going to work for the students. And these opportunities that I have are, or that I have up here, these are ones that they've had to work for. These are relationships that they are expanding outside of our walls to create opportunities for students. Next slide. "They are good teachers and they will help you with anything. They are easy to talk to, and I feel like they never judge students. They are always there for me." That is from a 12th grade student. "We look at inclusive and equitable education system. The students in Jody and Trina's classroom know that that is a place that they can be seen, they can be heard, they can feel comfortable, and they're able to be themselves, and I think that's an extremely powerful thing." And it's, it's also safe to say with the environment that these two teachers create in their classroom, some of these students really go to school just because they know they are going to be working with Jody and Trina in their classroom. As we look at well-being, student, 9th grade student, "They have helped me get through my classes and get better grades. They helped me with more than grades, heavier stuff. That means more." This quote is from a parent. "Thank you so much for being involved in my child's success. I greatly appreciate you. We appreciate Trina Noble more than we can say. Without Ms. Noble, our daughter wouldn't be as successful without her help and assistance. Jody Tester is also a very important person when she is having trouble regulating her emotions. We love and appreciate everyone working towards the same goals for our daughter." When we look at well-being, you know, these two are, they're licensed teachers, but they wear a lot of hats. Social workers, counselors, mental health professionals. They, they're, they really will become whatever the student needs, and they're able to support their, their students in a variety of ways. With well-being and with mental health, there's also the collaboration with a lot of other outside agencies that we work with. These two are in frequent contact with probation officers, county workers, social workers, mental health providers, care and treatment providers. Their, their network of the wraparound supports really expand beyond the, the school, and it's all focused on the well-being of, of the student and understanding that's a team approach. Trust and partnership. I'm going to have to turn over here because my eyes aren't quite that good. This is from John Akins, high school counselor. "Jody and Trina demonstrate that they care about the students through their interactions, that I see them engaged with their students. For example, Trina and her students make the greatest grilled cheese sandwiches. Seriously, the best I've eaten. Trina also works hard to make sure her student schedules are accurate. I'm amazed how well it seems that Trina knows her student's schedules, the interests of her students, and what her students need the most in order to experience success. Jody always seems to be wherever she is needed at the right time. For example, if I've been working with one of her students and we have a question, all of a sudden Jody shows up. Jody also knows the needs of her students very well and is so organized when it comes to making sure the student's schedules are accurate. She is also great about helping her department with schedules. Jody is a coach, and it's so nice to introduce a potential track athlete to her, and she's always encouraging students to get involved." I want to make a note on that. Part of their role, and as I mentioned with Jody with being a track coach, is that we're able to have maybe a lot of other students who always wanted to do that, but maybe didn't, you know, feel like that was their comfort zone. They feel a safe place, knowing that their teacher or somebody that they work with is also the coach. So we've been able to involve a lot of students in extracurricular activities just by having that connection that Jody brings to that role and that capacity. This, this quote is from Janine Nelson, high school social studies teacher. "Jody and Trina do not seek the spotlight or center stage. They are not recognized enough for their incredible impact they have on their students' lives, the lives of the families they work with day in and day out, developing relationships, and also their colleagues, who they make better by helping them understand their students and how to best support them. They are a true team, one who unapologetically puts students first. I am in constant awe of how they deal with extremparaneous, I knew I was going to stumble on that word, thanks Janine for increasing my vocabulary, situations I would send most general ed teachers running. Trina, Jody, and the incredible special ed department at the high school should be recognized more for the job they do selflessly every day. I'm very proud to work with both of these amazing educators, and they are so very deserving of this recognition." Alright, and then we look at excellence, and this is something that everyone takes very seriously, and these two have really helped lead and mentor other educators on their way to excellence. If you recall that first slide, 34 years each of them have experience in education. And as we move along in our career, we always, we talk about like, how are you expanding your impact? And they're able to expand their impact by mentoring and influencing our younger teachers to be able to see that passion, that drive, that creativity that is so integral to what we do in education. So that, through their leadership, they really help us move towards excellence, and I want to read a few of these quotes too. "I was able to get good classes and be a full-time student with their help." 9th grade student. I just want you to think about that. Being a full-time student, that was, that's a big deal to this student, and these, this is their safety net. "Every decision that Joe, both Jody and Trina make has the student in mind. They both set the bar high for kids and support them each step along the way to help them reach it. They hold their kids accountable, which can make life tough at times. However, students know that both Jody and Trina have their back." Dave Metzl, high school math teacher and 11th grade student, "They have really helped me improve my math skills. They always give good effort with everything they do." And I thought I'd end on this slide. We have our mission, beliefs, and parameters of our strategic plan, and I put this up here because I really think these two live our strategic plan. They do it every day when they come to work, and it's just, it makes everybody better. A couple of things that jump out, just, and hopefully you can see it after that brief presentation is, you know, a, a community where each person is valued, respected, seen, and heard. Integrity is critical to trust in relationships. Joy must be part of the human experience. Diversity strengthens community and individuals. I could go on, and I think you could see, if you look at that and with my presentation, hopefully you're getting a glimpse of why it was so easy for me to be able to recognize these two individuals. So, Jody and Trina, if you want to come up and get your certificate.
Okay, so we are going to keep moving along. We are going to move up at, item 11B, up and do that next. That's why we approved the agenda with flexibility. So if we could have the NAIPAC presentation of the annual compliance vote. If you could come up, and then we'll take our. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. We are here on behalf of the Native American Parent Advisory Committee, or NAIPAC, to present the annual vote of concurrence. Next slide, please. My name is Ally Middlebrook. I'm a district-wide social worker and the district representative for our NAIPAC.
Noah, my name is Jennifer Murray. I am Iroh Iroh from the MHA Nation of the Fort Berthold Reservation in northwestern North Dakota. I have a second grader, a kindergartner, and preschooler in the district.
Next slide, please. So a NAIPAC, a Native American Parent Advisory Committee, Minnesota statute requires any school with our school district with 10 or more enrolled Native American students to start an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, often called an APAC. These committees serve an advisory role and help ensure that American Indian students are receiving culturally relevant and equitable educational opportunities. This year, our parent committee decided to change the name from American Indian to Native American Parent Advisory Committee, so for the rest of this presentation, we'll refer to it as NAIPAC. We currently have 42 children from 23 families who identify as Native American who attend schools in our district. Next slide.
And every year, Ms. Ally asks us to vote either in concurrence or not of the, for the resolution of concurrence. We, I would like to note, we, we did vote in concurrence. You can read what's up on the slide. We are a small but mighty group. I was so excited when I found out that this was available and this community is building within the Mod Amedai School District. So far, we have about three active families in the NAIPAC group, but we are, we are going to grow it. We are very committed to it, so we very strongly vote in concurrence.
And I'll just say a little more on that too. Could you go back to the previous slide? So Minnesota Department of Education's Office of Indian Education requires this annual vote of compliance every year from every district's APAC or NAIPAC. And so this is, this is the fourth year of our NAIPAC, and so the fourth year we've, the parent committee has taken this vote, and a vote of concurrence just means that the parent group feels like the district is doing what it can to support the educational needs and offer culturally relevant experiences to our Native American students.
So a brief update of what we have been up to. We meet every other month. We meet in this room. Actually, it's one of the things that my kids look forward to. They always ask when we're going to our meeting. We start out with a dinner. Food is very important to many cultures. It's extremely important that we feast together as Native American people. We have our business meeting, and we conclude with an activity that's culturally, culturally relevant, and it is put together by one of the families, so we really get the kids engaged in creating the activity and then doing it together as a group. We did decide to change the name. We did not feel that American Indian was representative of how we felt as a group. That's more of a government-issued name for us, that we prefer Native American to be in this system. And then we talked a lot about Native, Native American Heritage Month, which is a huge opportunity for us to showcase our culture, not only in the school district, but in this community. We also have opportunities for, May is Minnesota American Indian Month, and then there's Indigenous Peoples' Day in October, so we're going to look to grow those opportunities going forward. We did have the, we had the American aid application, and I'll have Ally talk more to this this year as well. If you want to jump in.
Yeah, so also once a school district has identified 20 or more Native American students enrolled, they are eligible for funding from the state, and so this is our third year with American Indian Education Aid. This year, we've allocated funds to support an ACT prep course for high school Native students, continue to build culture trunks for various departments, and we'll talk a little bit more about culture trunks later, send staff to the MIEA Conference, the Minnesota Indian Education Association Conference. That is a really amazing professional development opportunity, and then also use the aid to bring in a Dakota storyteller at Wildwood, and we have launched Teacher Team Mini Grants that supports initiatives that teachers K-12 want to implement surrounding Native American content. Annual compliance, yep. And then in October, we did staff professional development around a Latin acknowledgement statement, and then we are looking forward to sending more staff to that conference I mentioned earlier this spring as well.
And next steps. We, we really are passionate about growing this group. The, the families are committed to growing this, so we want to get more families involved in the area. We are wanting to focus more on the middle school age kids because the high schoolers are not engaging with us, and we feel like the middle schoolers, we might get that opportunity to get them involved and then come in at a high school level. Right now, I think our oldest kid is
In middle school.
In middle school, Hawkinson. Yes, so we really want to get people, our kids, involved in the middle school, take us up through high school. They're great role models. We are really actively looking to include or increase the library, the texts available. There are so many great Native American artists and so many texts available today, and we'd like to increase those in the classroom and in the library, and the ability to increase the teachers' access to resources and for them to be able to present it in a respectful and meaningful way within their classrooms is another one of our initiatives with the, the culture trunks, and then another way is to help Native and non-Native students interact with our culture through things such as the powell, the many bases powell that we held last May.
No, no, that's great. So I, I said I would talk a little bit more about culture trunks. There are some images of some items we've purchased in the last year. So culture trunks are, are trunks that we build or, you know, totes or whatever the vessel is to, with authentic Native American items and texts to enhance teaching of Native American content in the classrooms. So, all these items have been purchased from a Native American shop. They owned by, and indigenous owners and made by indigenous craftspeople, and, and they've been really great to work with. They've been excited to help other school districts build culture trunks, so they've been a great partner in this. And then also, we've purchased many Native American texts as well. So you can see there, at the top, there's Dakota Nojibwe belt. There's a cradle board, that is Iroh Iroh. We have a Dakota or a Nojibwe beaded bag, and then Dakota and Ojibwe beaded moccasin. So those, those are just a few of the items. We've purchased many things, but just give you an idea of the wonderful things that our students are starting to gain access to in the classrooms as we build these culture trunks throughout different departments. What questions might you have for us?
I, I just, I'll comment on what, it's been really fun to see the program grow and just how much more you've added and, and the depth of the program and all the opportunities that you have for staff as well. I think that's been fabulous. So each time you do this presentation, it gets even better. So thank you for coming tonight.
I have to be close to the mic. I too appreciate how much the program's grown, and as it grows, I appreciate the fact that you have students coming in to be part of the community building you're doing within, you know, our larger community of indigenous folks. As you think about that, how are you addressing, listening to the student voice to know how to direct the work that you're doing, right? Because as adults, we think we know what students want, but the student voice is very important, so I'm very curious of how you are or plan to use student voice in your future work in this area.
That's a great question.
Do we speak to her, or would you like to? Okay. Yeah, great question. Thank you. That is kind of constantly on our action plan list. We, we've been working for the last couple of years to try to engage some of our high school Native American voices. We haven't been able yet to fully engage them, and so Jennifer had mentioned, maybe looking at trying to shift and engaging those, those middle school voices. Where we also, I think, a, a big strength we're going to have is the community we're building within our NAIPAC meetings because we, it's not just a business meeting. We make it community time. So, so Jennifer's kids and everyone else's who are growing up in our district, they're be, they're engaging in this from a young age, and we're hoping to keep harnessing their voices as they get older too. At our last meeting, we actually had a new family join with high school, a high school and a middle school student, so I was excited about that. So we'll continue. I think our biggest way right now to get those voices is through our NAIPAC meetings and really building those as a community space, and then we'll just keep reaching out in the schools as well.
So, Dr. Payne, you made me think of a question because I, I feel the excitement from both of you, and I appreciate all the enthusiasm for this. I, I can see how, you know, there's, there's a lot of momentum that's, that's really brewing here and that we've heard this presentation now, or I have a few years in a row, and how it's growing, and I love that. But my question to you is if you have three families at this point that are coming regularly to your meetings, I'm wondering, what are the different ways that you're able to re, reach out or network to be able to grow that? Because it sounds like it's so great. It's almost just the hardest part is getting them in the door, and I'm not saying I have the answer because I'm a mom, and I feel like my kids would say I don't have any of the answers, but may, you know, social media, maybe gets, getting some of those three families that are coming, getting the students to be able to share about their experience through social media because through email and things like that, what we use for adults doesn't seem to work with the students. So just wondering if there's any possibility to think about kind of growing that from within this, from the students.
That is a hot topic. We talk about it at almost every meeting because it is such a fantastic place to share and have community. My cousin is a basketball coach in Milwaukee, and he is the head of their NAIPAC organization, and he uses basketball. We really need something to get the older kids engaged. Like, we need something to activate and to, to do something around to bring them in and then have the business meeting and go from there. But we are constantly talking about how to, how to get in, into the schools more and, and get them to our meeting.
Yeah, thank you. And we, yeah, we continue to do outreach every year, especially as new families join who mark Native American in their registration packets, and we, we promote it in the e-news before every meeting. And, yeah, we, woo, pardon me. We just continue to look forward to growing. Everyone I've talked to who runs a Native American Parent Advisory Committee or who is involved in it has told me it's okay if it goes slow. Most of them have a really slow start. It takes a long time to build kind of trust and community and, and build a space that, that families feel safe coming to, so.
I echo that. It, it does, it will take us. I would say by five years.
From a student perspective, I think that one thing that'd be helpful for you guys to recruit students in the high school is to maybe reach out to the leaders of base. I don't know if Ms. Middlebrook is aware of that being in the high school. I think that's a great way to introduce students to the possibilities of joining.
Thank you so much, and I think we'll take our.
Thank you very much.
Well, if you could just do it now.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. So, we need to approve this, so if I could have a motion.
So we need to approve this. So if I could have a motion for approval of the NAIPAC presentation of the annual compliance vote.
I'm moved.
By Director Doman.
Second.
Seconded by Director Regan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Now we will go back to our regularly. Our report from our student rep, Fatima.
Yes, this past Thursday and this Tuesday, the kindergartners and first graders at Wildwood celebrated the 100th and 101st day of school. And I have a younger sibling in kindergarten and he was so excited for this celebration. And for me, just seeing that we are already 100 days into the school year really showed me how fast like the school year has gone and how much we have achieved. And it's a little sentimental as a senior, I would say, knowing that this is the last time I'll be hearing about spending 100 days in the school year at Monamidi. But another thing at OH that's happening is that February is kindness month. And in this month, they are not only hosting a food drive, but they're also handing out like tickets to students who were caught being kind. And this is an amazing way to once again teach students how to be positive influences in a way that's engaging and fun for the students. At the high school, the Real World Design Team won state for the ninth time in a row, which is a big accomplishment. And another thing that's happening at the high school is that this week is Avid Registration Week. And Avid is a program that will be starting next year. It's a program that's going to be offered to the current freshmen right now. And it's supposed to guide students towards the resources available to them when it comes to preparing for and brainstorming what their post-secondary future will look like. I've had the opportunity to talk to a few peers who were in Avid programs in their former districts. And some common things that they told me were that they all had really positive experiences. They talks about how helpful the program was for helping them think about what college to look, what colleges to look into and what careers they might want to have. And one thing that one of my peers specifically highlighted was that this program taught them several skills that will be applicable wherever they go. And one of those skills was organization skills. And I also think that introducing those program really helps further our initiative to build learner agency in the high school. And one upcoming event that we should all be aware of is that the musical at the middle school will be starting the weekend of March 1st. That's what's going on in our district right now.
Now our superintendent's report. Because there's a lot of great things to report. So as always, we will do around the district, give you some ideas of what's happening. Talk a little bit about Zephyr Wellness Event that we had recently. And an upcoming desert and dialogue is, is something we want to highlight and talk about today. You may have noticed, we had a couple of articles in, we, about literacy, one in the White Bear Press and also in AMSD Connections, just really highlighting the work that we've been doing to enhance our literacy program. And so we've been in the news for that. So we wanted to just share that with you. I, did you see this on the front page of the White Bear Press? It's pretty exciting. Our wrestling program, our girls' wrestling program. And what's also really exciting, if you haven't seen this article in the White Bear Press, it's that it's been, it was written by Olivia Decker, who is a class of 2022. And she came back and wanted to do some work. She was a communications intern while she was here. And so when she was back from college, she picked up a couple of stories. And so it's, it's fun to see that article specifically written by one of our alumni. I want to just also highlight this OHA kindness, kindness week, month, day. In particular, I was here for this when they were working on, at the tables on these different projects. And it, it's the, so they, February, as you know, on, on February, I think I was there on Valentine's Day. And so there was the, there were some traditional Valentine things going on. And then there were these big service projects as well. And just all the, if you look on Facebook or Instagram, you'll see a lot of pictures of all the students that were engaging in these projects. And it was, it was fun to see and all their, their enthusiasm around doing these projects. This is the, this is the age group where, where students really like to do a lot of these projects with their friends. So it was, it was fun to see. I also got to see the fourth grade. I don't know if you've ever gotten, we highlighted this in another publication, I think it was the annual report, Mr. Murgas and the Classroom Economy. And I got to, to be there to see students selling their products and look at their business plans as well that they had written. So that was pretty fun. We do have, we have learned recently that we have five of our students that are Merit Scholars are finalists as well. And so I want to just highlight those, those students and congratulate them. Only 15,000 students across the country are selected as finalists. So congratulations to those five students. And Fatima, as always, beat me to some of my things that I wanted to highlight also. But the congratulations to the Real World Design Challenge teams. Multiple teams were recognized and one of our teams, I believe it was Zap that did win. So congratulations to them. Just a couple of our clubs that we're offering at the middle school. And so we just wanted to highlight, you know, one of our, our goals. And in our strategic plan was really to expand a lot of offerings and opportunities to our middle school students. And here are two, two newer offerings that we have at our middle school. The Black Student Union Club, we have, that is being run by one of our former teachers, comes back and run, comes back to run some student affinity groups. And then we also have math counts, which is new this year. And they are headed to the state competition after their first year. And so congratulations and good luck to them as well. So community education around, another around the district thing. I, I love that picture on the, on the left with the, the smiles there. So they had their first no school day out event and had students attending Feed My Starving Children in the morning and then got to do some snow tubing together, together afterwards, so. And then on the right are the MAC held their annual Kids Garage Day, Garage Sale Day on Friday, February 16th as well. A few things happening with community education. So Zephyr Sports, I think these pictures are just here because Director Regan and I attended the, the girls' hockey.
You didn't say that was going to
Oh, well, that wasn't my fault. That wasn't my fault. So one picture was taken by Director Peterson when she happened upon the ski race. And then Director Regan and I were at a girls' hockey game as well. So, but the real thing that we wanted to highlight is that our hockey coach, Jeff Pochel, just recently won his 500th career game. Congratulations also to Coach Debbie Driscoll for 320 conference wins. And now section and state competitions have started for winter sports. We do have three gymnasts headed to state this weekend, so.
And I could be wrong, but I think hockey's playing as we speak. Go Zephyrs.
Sorry, this is harder for me to see from a distance here, but our latest, no, it's not you. It's, it's just my eyes. I'm sorry. It's me. So we, our latest alumni newsletter was mailed on February 12th. And it's, we have highlighting Jesse Pearson there, MHS class of 2006. And she is a sports reporter that, for the National Hockey League and she's featured. I know that she came to our middle school career day last year to do a presentation that everyone loved. And I believe she's coming up soon. She's doing another presentation at the high school as well. So we are thankful for her engagement with our students. We recently had a Zephyr Wellness Event regarding the impact of vaping. It was a community engagement night and we, from the American Lung Association, had a speaker from the American Lung Association to kind of walk us through some of the trends and the impact of vaping on, on the brain and teenagers. And so that slide deck will be available soon. We'll have that slide deck out for people who want to review it on their own. And I, we did not have a video for this, so I'll just let you know that ahead of time. But there is a, there is a slide deck coming. We have an upcoming desert and dialogue on March 12th and we're going to be sending out information about this soon. If anyone out there who's listening or in the audience right now, if you supervise, hire, recruit employees or you work directly with post-secondary students in the college environment or military branch, what we're looking for are people to come together and join us and have conversation about what it is, what are those, those characteristics, skills, exceptional qualities you think our students need to possess to be successful in both their post-secondary endeavors? So we're looking for your input, those of you out there who, who have that experience and can help us build our profile of a graduate. We'll use our profile of a graduate then to, to communicate with our students in order to help them drive their futures by making their choices, creating, creating their own portfolios, creating their own resumes based on those things that we know, we hear that, that are being looked for in terms of characteristics in our graduates. And so more to come on that. But we are looking for volunteers for March 12th to come together and have conversation with us around, around college and career success. And I won't read all of these, but we do have at the end here, we do, for those of you who want to review this later, we do have some upcoming events. And I will just once again highlight the middle school production of Newsies, which is coming up at the end of March. And that's, I think that's, that's my update.
Can I comment on one more thing? Since we're doing the section and state tournament updates, I know our Alpine ski racers, a couple of them participated in the state meet. One of them is senior Stella Demarest plays quite well. So I just want to say congratulations to her as well.
Hey, thank you. That was a long report.
Oh.
Okay, now, next, discussion and information items. We'll start with our board member calendar. Does anyone have anything they want to point out or call attention to on our calendar? I do want to note, we received from Director Payne the 916 notes and that had some dates on it for upcoming visits. So I keep those in mind too. They're not listed here for tours of some of those schools. And then we have our day at the Capitol, MSBA Day at the Capitol is March 18th. MSD is March 5th. Okay, nothing else, then we'll move on to our curriculum update.
I think we've learned this doesn't work tonight. Is that correct? Oh, there's no battery. That's why it wasn't working. Right, we'll just leave it there. Okay, all right. So tonight I'm here to talk about a curriculum update focused specifically on literacy and science. So just as a high-level overview, the Teaching and Learning Department, and typically it's me who comes up here for our school district, I regularly provide the school board with updates that involve our data and programming. And so I get to see you all a lot. And the updates this evening, just as a point of context, are as a result of a vast amount of work done with a number of stakeholder groups. Our Science Curriculum Review Committee is represented in this update tonight. Our English Language Arts Curriculum Review Committee, the OHA Instructional Leadership Team, the District Leadership Team and our District Curriculum Advisory have all been part of this process and have offered feedback that have led us to this update. As we think about the expertise of our educators, the strategic plan, our data and legislative requirements, those are all parts and pieces that help really guide our work. And that's what helps us have a culture of rigorous academics where each student will thrive and find their path for success. As a reminder, and you've heard a number of folks tonight talk about our strategic plan, really the foundation of this particular presentation tonight is tied directly to our strategic plan and that idea of building learner agency through exceptional learning experiences. And as it states in our strategic plan, systems at Monamidi Public Schools exist to support a strong academic foundation for all students with an emphasis on literacy, math and science. That was one of our strategic planning goals and they have given some recommendations. And that's part of the work that guides the work that I do for the district. So our topics tonight, and I'm going to chunk these out so that I, and I will pause after each one so you all can ask questions if you have them. I'm going to start with elementary literacy and give you an update where we are there. Then I'm going to talk about elementary science. And that leads to the OHA's specialist. And then I will wrap up tonight talking about secondary science. So as you know, the REED Act, and you've heard me say that a whole lot up here, the REED Act has had unprecedented expectations for teachers and districts. It has outlined specified professional development for specific roles on a defined timeline. It has specified assessment tools for particular grades on a defined timeline. And it has specified curriculum resources. Legislatively, this has been an amazing catalyst to transform literacy instruction across the state of Minnesota. And as you all know, we were ahead of the game. And so we are poised in a really great place to act on that legislation because we have already begun building that foundation. So as a response to the combination of the new statutory language and that foundation that I was just mentioning, we were already building a number of pieces. So we have determined that letters, Language Essentials for the Teachers of Reading and Spelling, is our preferred professional development resource. We have two internal trainers and we have two additional teachers who are currently being trained to deliver letters professional development. And we have one preschool teacher who will be trained. We have initiated a district implementation team to address both our implementation of letters and our long-term literacy improvement. And I believe that you all have seen a, a portion of our literacy roadmap, which just speaks to how complex it is to make progress in literacy. One of the things that happened in that legislation was a recommendation or a necessity that CARRY, which is the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement, needed to do some research and provide a list of five curriculum resources to MDE that would be posted for district schools to use. One of the nuggets of information that we've learned is that CARRY spent more than 11,000 hours reviewing resources from any vendor that wanted to submit them. Per the statute, they identified five curriculum resources that met those rigorous standards. And our elementary literacy curriculum team has followed a structured process to evaluate the resources. So independent of the resources that we choose, there's a need to shift how we deliver literacy instruction and those practices involved. We know, and you've heard both Judy Livingston and Lindsay Scanlon use the words explicit and systematic, structured literacy. We need an allocation of an additional time to do what we have learned in the letters professional development. Not only is that recommendation coming from the learning that our teachers are doing, but as we reviewed the curriculum resources that were rigorously vetted by CARRY, there is no resource that is on the list that will is no resource that is on the list that will require less than two hours of instruction per day in literacy to deliver. That two hours in one of the resources is inclusive of 20 to 40 minutes of that foundational skills, and another resource, it is beyond that, that instruction. So a ton of time. Our next steps for literacy is our team needs to plan the implementation of the new curriculum resources. We need to increase our, the number of teachers who are trained to deliver letters professional development, and we need to refine our schedules to ensure that there's adequate time for literacy instruction. So that's one of the heavy, these are the heavy lifts that are on our near horizon. So that's one bucket. Let's go back a slide. Perfect. I'm going to pause and say, what questions do you have for me about literacy?
Go ahead, Dr. Ekel.
A fully baked question yet, but you had talked about our literacy roadmap, and obviously there's new state standards coming down. I know you kind of talked about it at a high level, but how, like the letters progress we've made to this point is great. How have the new standards that were being forced or recommended to implement, how is that going to change or affect our roadmap? Do you feel like we're well-equipped to handle that? Do you feel like there's gaps we need to address? Like, if you could give us some context there, that might be helpful.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the work that we do in a curriculum review process is really to take time to dig into those standards, and the learning that our teachers are doing with the letters professional development are really doing exactly what you said. We are poised to change our instruction. One of the things that our elementary teachers in particular know best is that a curriculum resource, because they're generalists and they teach math and science and social studies and language arts, that that curriculum resource is a really important added resource to help them do the good job that they can in their classrooms with literacy instruction. So with the learning, with the new standards, and with that new resource that we will be adopting next year, it's going to change, it's going to change how we do literacy instruction, and our teachers are so excited about seeing how what they're learning in their letters professional development is, is working with kids in their classroom, particularly at Wildwood because they had a year of learning and now they're deep into implementation. Our OHA colleagues, they're already practicing some things in their classroom, and they're really excited about what they're seeing with their students. So we are already making those adjustments. Did that?
Yeah, no, I think that's helpful. Do you feel we've got the adequate resources beyond Wildwood to continue with the implementation of this plan, or is that, is that still a gap at this point?
Yeah, no, we definitely, in our roadmap, we know that the letters professional development is a two-year plan. And so Wildwood did year one last year. This year is their implementation. We're going to take a pause in our learning next year for both Wildwood and OH, so we can focus on the implementation of the new resources, and the year after, we're going to do both. So Wildwood will get back to their volume two, and OHA will go to volume one, which is why we're increasing the number of trainers that we have internally. One of the things that we're, that we're really fortunate to have people who are eager to be trainers, there are many districts who are waiting for the state to put out, here's the list, sign up if you can, and you have to do it on their schedule. Because we have internal trainers, we get to align those face-to-face debriefs on our professional development days. So that, we knew that we needed to increase our capacity, and that's in the roadmap of how do we get more people trained? And as soon as we hear about that, we are recruiting folks who have the expertise and the interest to say, are you, are you in?
Yeah, that's awesome, and that's great to hear that we're that far ahead. Just to clarify, like, I was also speaking more towards like the physical resources, like the materials needed to properly implement that. Are we good from that perspective?
Yes, we will be. So with the new resources, we will purchase them and we will implement them in the fall, and will, all of our teachers will, will have all of the things they need. That coupled with the generous donations that we got through MAF for our decodable texts, that is an ongoing part of the teaching and learning budget, is to make sure that we continue to supplement with those decodable texts. Our three through five teachers are really exploring how do decodable texts work in our world, because they are a primary reading tool, and we know that there are some kids in grades three through five who need access to that, but not every child after grade two needs a whole slew of those. So we definitely do. We also know that there are some state dollars that are out there that can help supplement what we are allocating to support the implementation of the resources, but only if they come off the list from CARRY and MDE.
Dr. Ekel, can you go back one slide for me, please, on the very last bullet point, where, can you kind of help me unpack that last bullet point? That, to me, I just am looking for a little more clarification of what that looks like for kids and at different grade levels.
Yeah, thank you. So when we think about the resource, and our elementary team has made the decision to move forward with a resource called Wit and Wisdom, which is a knowledge-building resource, but what that means is we need to have enough time for kids to read and practice those skills, and another time to work on those foundational skills. So what this doesn't mean is that we're going to have two and a half hours connected where kids are only sitting and reading. We break that into smaller chunks because we know that K to five doesn't have the stamina to do all of that for a long duration, and that's the work of our English Language Arts Curriculum Review Team and our building principals to look at, how do we schedule these things for the best interest of kids, but also so that we can meet the expectations of those resources that have been determined by the state as meeting the rigorous standards? Did that get you what you needed?
Well, I guess, I guess I'm, yes, yes, and, my last follow-up on this would be then that, that, what do we, what do we currently have? How does that compare?
Oh, great question. So we have anywhere from 75 minutes to two hours in, and you see two hours mostly in our primary grades allocated to literacy instruction. And so those grades where we see about 75 minutes, we need more time to do what the resources say we need to do and what our learning says we need to do.
You sort of answered my question already, so that helped. So the MAF grant last year, those books are not sitting in a closet. They are used and they're doing what they were supposed to and what the teachers wanted and the...
Yes. So what we did intentionally is we spent probably 75% of those dollars on, here's what we know we need, and then we wanted teachers to use them and say, oh, but wait, we need a little bit more here, and we need a little bit more here, so that we can fill out based on the practical use of them. So we have, we have some dollars that we haven't spent yet, but they are definitely out and definitely being used primarily by our K2 teachers, but we have some texts in our third grade classrooms right now and with our intervention and special ed teachers as well.
And part two, when do you expect to see, or when do you think these books are working? Look at, can you fill in my question?
Yes.
Is this a, is this a second grader now, will, as a third grader or a fourth grader, or even in second grade, expect to see, wow, these books are really...
I think our, well, not I think, I know, our classroom teachers, beginning in kindergarten, as they are doing their progress monitoring data, as we are collecting our FastBridge data, they are already seeing the return on that investment. Our kids' skills are growing tremendously in literacy because of the way that our, our teachers are teaching. We're seeing more growth right now at Wildwood as we would expect because they've done a full year of learning and now they're in that implementation. And our, our OHA teachers, their job right now is to do some learning and a little bit of practice, not a wholesale implementation, because that's a heavy lift, but we're already seeing the return.
So I know I seem to bring this up every time we talk about this, but I know we're focused on elementary literacy, but I still worry about students who are in sixth or seventh grade who aren't meeting their grade level expectations. Is any of this getting to them?
Yes, but not yet, and here's why. The statutory language does outline that there are secondary teachers who need to participate in professional development. The, the professional development tool, the letters of secondary, has not been outlined yet. We know that letters is really a great fit for our elementary teachers because they work on those foundational skills and on morphology, all of that other stuff that's in volume two. We are waiting for the state to say, this is the gold standard for our secondary teachers, but in that district implementation team that I talked about, we do have middle school representation on there, so they know we have to work on this, but it's not quite time yet. My understanding is also that the state is going to be putting out a list of secondary English Language Arts resources, and recently I've met with both the English department at the middle school and at the high school, and have given them the update with regard to the READ Act and what's coming for them. Our intervention teachers have already participated in letters training at the middle school, so they have that rich learning, and they're doing the instruction that aligns with that. I think we've talked about, we know that there are some students who need that support, who don't yet qualify for that support, and we have to, we have little bits and pieces of things that are happening. Lindsay Scanlon has done an excellent job of partnering with one of our special ed teachers at the high school, so that there's that learning that's happening for a group of students at the high school as well. Okay, so then we're moving on to science. So I think I've shared with you all that there were new standards that were drafted by the Minnesota Department of Education in the area of science, and unlike most science or standards updates from the state where we see somewhat of a shift, science had a significant shift in not only what we teach, and we've seen some changes at the secondary level of what content is in what grade level, we've seen some minor changes at the elementary, but the standards also change the expectation of how we teach science. It calls for much more focus on an inquiry-based approach to science instruction with hands-on learning, which is what we know that all kids need. In addition to that, that context building that I want to share with you, and I think I've shared before, to support these new standards, we've done what's called a rolling implementation. So we didn't say, this year, everybody's doing the new standards. We said, we're going to start in third grade and sixth grade and at the high school, and then the next year, we're going to add on so that no student is asked to repeat content or lessons they would have learned the year before. So this year, we are through the elementary, we are through the middle school, and I'll talk about high school at the end of this presentation. One of the things that we did is we sought out some feedback from our OHA classroom teachers about their thoughts and the challenges that they have, particularly as it addresses science instruction. And these are a few of the comments that are focused specifically on addressing the standards. I'll just pick a couple of these for you to read. That first bullet point is one I think you've heard from other leaders in the district about our school day in general. There's not enough time in the day, period. We need to look at ways to double-dip with reading and math. We did some good professional development at the beginning of the school year. The teachers at OHA really valued the learning with science notebooks, and it's been hard to try and do both of those with, with all of the asks that are being added to OHA today. And then that last one, I'll just take a, just that first part of it, with the time that's allocated to science right now, I'm really only able to meet the standards at a shallow level. One of the things that we have shared before is our elementary science MCA data, and this has been an area of concern that the board has asked about previously, and as a reminder, in 2020, we didn't have MCAs, but we have seen a decline. The 2021 is, it, many districts attribute that to the disrupted learning the prior year, but we know that our science scores at fifth grade are not where we know they can be. So when we think about addressing the time needs, both what I talked about with literacy, with an increased need to have more literacy instruction, and in order to address the depth and complexity of the science standards, we've consulted a lot of different teams. Our curriculum review teams, I've mentioned, the science and the English Language Arts, OHA Instructional Leadership Team, and that group is really charged with guide, wrapping their arms around and thinking about how do we make programmatic decisions and scheduling decisions at OHA in particular. Our district leadership team has talked about, how do we make this work? And at the most recent District Curriculum Advisory Team, we also talked about what's happening in science and what options we might have. And we've determined that our preferred solution is to address both, in order to address both the literacy and the science instructional time constraints, is to add a STEM specialist at OHA. We are intending to split the science standards, so our classroom teachers will still address some of those science standards, and then some of the standards will be addressed by the STEM specialist in order to make sure that students have time for that hands-on inquiry-based learning in both places and move beyond a shallow addressing of the standards. And this also helps us to increase available time for literacy instruction because we're decreasing the classroom teacher's requirement for time allocation with science. Given the, the constraints of our schedule and the standards that we have, that we are expected and required to follow from the state, it's important to know that each of the other specialists have elementary standards they need to address. Our, you've heard about the increased needs of art at the middle school. We have both music and art. Our FIAD has standards, and our media has some ISTI standards, and there are some additional computer science standards on the way for, for each of those positions that we are required to address. So our next steps after communication with the board, which is our, our process here is we begin with, hey, you need to hear some things. We will follow up with a message to our families, and then we will work, I have a meeting on the books with our science curriculum review team at the elementary level to work on dividing those standards between a classroom teacher and a STEM specialist. So I'm going to pause here and say, what questions do you have for me?
I think I've got a couple of questions, but the first one that's coming to mind is we obviously heard from a very passionate community tonight, and as school board members, we represent our community. I guess my first question is, have we taken any community and parent feedback into this evaluation? I assume and I hope the answer is yes, but I would like to understand like what has been done to this point.
Thank you. District Curriculum Advisory is that community group that, that is in my purview of engaging to give some feedback, and so at our last meeting, we did talk to them about an OHA STEM specialist, and the group unanimously, while they don't vote, they understood the need to add that role in our district at OHA in order to address the literacy and science needs.
And then I guess my, my second part is more of a... And then I guess my, my second part is more of a comment than a question. It's a challenging problem for us to solve for. I tend to agree with a lot of the comments that were made by the community tonight. And I, in full transparency, I'm very biased, I'm married to a next Spanish teacher. But I do see the value in second life, second language education. But I also understand the challenge that we have with having to meet state guidelines. And, um, I, I just want to comment that I don't have a made up opinion at this point. It's not a good situation for us to be in. And I know we're all working to do the best we can. Um, so I appreciate you sharing this information with us tonight. But I also appreciate the comments from the community.
Thank you.
So the curriculum advisory committee is the statute oriented group. The curriculum advisory committee is our statute, um, required group for that parent involvement. That's been in place and is the process that we use for that, right? So it's not that we chose to go there, we're required to get the parent input through that committee process.
Yes.
Can we back up to the slide with the test scores on it too?
We're going back.
There it is. So we have new standards.
Yes.
We have a rolling adoption.
Yes.
But we're still in MCA threes, aren't we?
Correct.
So the drop is not unexpected in the test score because we are teaching the new standards. But being the assessment is on the old standards, right? Because the MCA fours aren't completed yet.
Correct. Fifth grade, however, didn't implement the new standards. And this is only fifth grade, uh, MCA data up there. They did not address the new standards until this year.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Just like Director Domann, you know, I feel as though, you know, I'm sure all of us want to provide as many opportunities for our students as possible. And I struggle with, you know, at the middle school, we've, um, you know, went through an entire process with. You know, taking a look at that schedule and expanding the opportunities for students by changing our schedule. And it seems as though many of our issues that we're talking about, um. Are difficult to solve because of the constraints we have maybe currently in our schedule and with state expectations. And, um, you know, every school is dealing with not only possibility of new computer science standards. Dealing with the read act and the implications of that across the state. I work with schools all over our state and every school is having this conversation, not just Modem Night Public Schools, everyone is dealing with this. I guess, well, thank you first of all, I'll just say thank you for bringing this to us the first time. Because, um, like Superintendent Dufferin said, we, this is our first time hearing about this. So, you know, I, I heard the community and we haven't taken any action on this. So this is, thanks for bringing this to our attention. I, I also feel very torn, um, in the fact that we have to do as much as we possibly can for all of our students. And we're under some constraints that are really difficult in the fact of our schedule. So I would love for us to take a look at, you know, what are other districts doing? With all of these new requirements around reading with, you know, um. So maybe we could talk about this further in a study session about what. What, what are neighbors doing? What are like-sized districts doing, um, with all of these new requirements around, you know, reading and possibly computer science? Those computer science standards, I believe, are open for public comment right now. So that's, we don't know what that's going to look like, but that's another thing coming around the corner. So I guess I don't really have a question other than I would hope that we could dig into this further, um, to really be well educated. To do what's best for our students.
I would just echo that last part is in terms of, um, making sure we've explored. What other options there were other than just replacing one with the other. I know we have time constraints, so I know we've talked about other, other things regarding time as well. So I think if we could just maybe have a, that background would be helpful for us.
Is it possible to add this topic to the study section, study session for further discussion?
We don't have another study session until April. Our next board, our next board meeting is regular meeting, um, because we only have one in March. But we can talk about, um, we can talk about adding something to an agenda in the future if you'd like.
Or if we are able to have our retreat. I don't know if that works yet, but Director Payne.
So as a governance board, our job is to direct the district through the superintendent and the strategic plan. So if we back up the slides again, way back to the beginning, I think we quoted our strategic plan. And I remember sitting here at the board table saying, what needs to go in here? Going back, just way back to the beginning.
First slide.
First slide. We had a long, a long conversation.
One more.
About, one more, there it is, about this statement of the foundation of our plan, which is how we direct the work to be done. And then we say out of the weeds, right? So we don't vote on high school classes, we don't vote on middle school classes. We're, this isn't something we're voting on, this is an update to us, is that right? Because we've given our direction, and our direction, we sat around the table and we said very clearly, it's written in the strategic plan. Literacy, math and science. So we've turned that to our superintendent, now she's implementing what we've asked her to do. So am I misunderstanding something? Cause we're a governance board, we're not a management board. And this is a management piece, right? So I, I love the conversation, I think it's really important and I want to be informed. But I don't have the expertise, I'm not in the classroom in this district to be able to have all the data information. We've used the statutory processes, we have the parent input. We have parent input on this that said, this is what they wanted us to focus on. So I'm just putting that out there as what our role is in this process.
I think what I'm hearing is that we just want better understanding of how the decision was made. Because, I mean, I could say tonight, but I didn't want to put her on the spot as to what, what was ruled out or what, what wasn't. And what are other districts doing? Because I don't think you have that at your fingertips.
Thank you. I appreciate that. But we can certainly follow up with that information. Know that I am in very frequent contact with other folks in my role across the state. On a probably every other week basis. And I have a collegial group and, and we talk about, a lot about what, uh, Director Regan was saying with the read act coming in. And with science standards coming in, like how are we making adjustments, particularly at the elementary level to address these things? And it is top of mind of all of my colleagues of how do we make space for all of the, the opportunities and expectations? That we have for our students.
And I, I want to back up, I'm sorry, I do agree with the Director Payne and your statement. You've, you've outlined it exactly right. I, I did also want to recognize that I, I didn't want to assume anyone was trying to. Get into the management piece. I understood it more as we just want to understand the, um, the, how you came to the decision. So that we're better informed.
Thank you. Okay. And then the final piece that I will talk about, a couple more slides. Right here is secondary science. So the new standards call, like I said, for elementary, call for changes to our instruction, our resources and our sequence. And so as a result, we have seen the shift in sixth grade from earth to earth science. It used to be physical science and we saw that change in the 21, 22 school year. Seventh grade remained that content area focus of life science. But they adjusted their instructional practices and implemented new resources in the 22, 23 school year. And then, um, this school year, we're seeing the implementation of physical science at grade eight, which used to be earth and space. This is the particular area that called for that rolling implementation. So students wouldn't take earth science and then two years later take earth science. At our high school, we have some statutory language that requires all students to take three credits of science. And in those three credits, students must satisfy all of the earth and space science standards. All of the life science standards and all of the chemistry or physics standards. Our high school team has had a lot of conversation from that pedagogical expertise that they have. And we have determined that our implementation plan will be, next slide please. In grade nine, we are going to sustain our physics first model. And we're going to embed earth and space science standards in there. In grade 10, students will continue with biology and we will embed earth and space standards there. And then in grade 11, students will participate in chemistry. And they will have earth and space science standards embedded there. For students who tend to choose, um, upper level coursework. The, um, AP and college in the schools opportunities can be used as a replacement for the grade level courses. And then we will add those earth and space standards in a unit at the end of the school year. When the coursework tends to be finished for AP or college in the schools. What questions or comments do you have about secondary science?
Director Payne.
So the statute is, um, life science, earth science. Cause it used to be they could choose chemistry or physics.
Yep.
So we're eliminating that choice.
Yep.
And so they'll have to take chemistry.
Correct.
Okay.
But what we're doing in, what we are not doing is chemistry or physics. And an additional earth and space course.
Right.
So that's, and that's what some districts are choosing to do. Because we follow a physics first model, which is a, a whole pedagogical model about how you layer science instruction. There was a strong belief from the team that we have to sustain that physics first. Because that's really best practice in science instruction. Our team has been in contact with another district who is following this same model. So they have colleagues that they are partnering with to figure out how do we do this implementation? With embedding earth and space science in it.
Remind us, so everyone has the context, what's the current requirements for graduation?
So current, yes, three credits.
So if they take physics and biology and they choose not to take chemistry, in our current situation, what would they take?
They would take physics.
I'm sorry, if they take physics and biology and the third one is required for graduation.
Yep. So they, they're, they could take a CIS physics, so that upper level physics would get them that, um. That's third credit.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, I got a follow-up.
Yeah, I'm going to follow up to what you're saying, so go ahead.
Okay. So what I'm wondering, so since we'll be requiring physics, biology, chemistry. In some ways we're taking away that, I, it leaves them very little time. They only have one more year then, I know, if they want to do these additional classes. So I guess they could do physics, biology and then AP chemistry or do you need?
Yep. Yep. You certainly can do that.
And then they just get one more after that, which we have a lot of options.
We do. With those engineering courses, what are teachers who are traveling that career in technical education piece? They're uncovering that those engineering courses really don't address the required state standards. And so they, they would be, need to be elective choices. And students can do those elective choices. Not so much in grade nine, because there's not a lot of choice in grade nine, but students can participate in those courses.
And so if they're, if we're requiring chemistry now, that's really math-based. So how do we handle that for our students who are not, not really have not gotten the way of math?
That's a great question. And what I would say is when we think about the earth and space focus. It becomes a change in what chemistry looks like. And it is not as math-based. And so you will likely see that the students who are super eager to do chemistry with a math focus. Are going to choose AP chemistry. And then there will be a, a different approach in the grade level chemistry. That is that more earth and space focused approach to chemistry. It's a great, definitely part of the ongoing conversation that our science teachers have had, making sure. How do we to create these courses that are accessible to all of our learners? And that they can be successful, no matter what math path they've been on.
Following up so much of that, if we've got this change, don't we have to update our school board policy on graduation requirements?
Yes. This begins with next year's ninth graders.
So that's on our docket with the policy committee to update that to match this.
Yes.
Um, my only question about this, when I looked at this ahead of time was. I was a little bit concerned about, like if a student chooses AP chemistry or the higher level CIS or whatever that might be. Some of those courses are, well, those courses are very rigorous as they, as a standalone. And then we also embed earth and space standards into that. How does that change the, I guess, you know, I, I don't really know what my question is. Other than how do the teachers feel about this? And is that possible in a course that oftentimes I feel like I hear that, like AP chemistry. They feel as though that content is overwhelming the amount that's in there for the year already.
Yes. Thank you for that question. So our folks who teach AP chemistry and CIS physics talked about that in particular. And know that the timeframe for those exams is typically in that early May timeframe. And so the intention is to teach AP chemistry, the way the college board expects AP chemistry to be taught. And then in the month of May is when we address those earth and space. So we are not changing the expectations of AP chemistry or CIS physics. Because we're beholden to the college board and to the U of M.
Okay. That's what I was hoping you were going to say.
Yeah.
Director Payne.
So does this change, proposed change that we'll need to make in the policy at some point? Impact the ability for students to take CTE courses for the science credits?
It will likely, because of the statutory language that says they have to address, um, life, earth and chemistry or physics. The engineering courses don't address those particular science standards.
What about the CTE courses at nine sixteen?
Oh, that is something I'll need to check into. Thank you. All right. Uh, I might have, I think that was it. What questions or comments? We got there. All right. Any last questions or comments for me? All right. Thank you for your time tonight.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask that we take a recess. We've been sitting for two hours.
Recession for five minutes. We're back in, we're back in sessions. Okay. I, um, we are in action items. Approval of donations and grants for January 2024 totaling $31,089 and 11 cents. Do you have a motion? By Director Domann.
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. Any discussion? All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of the school district and are used towards the wishes of the donors. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Goes opposed, motion carries. And we've already handled item B, so we'll move to item C, the 2023, 2024 budget revision.
Good evening. You gonna run? You want me? Okay, I can do this. I can do this. Yeah. All right. Look at that. So, uh, this is the time we bring budget revisions. Um, and these are based on last year. So the budget you first approved, which was a preliminary budget that was approved by the board in June of last year. So we've got a number of months and what happens is when we get a number of months in. We can start to see some of the MDE reports get updated. We have a number of different things that happen. We start to see some history in some other areas. And so, um, we start to make some revisions to the budget. And, uh, so I'm just going to jump over to. So when we look at what types of things drive these budget revisions. If I look at that middle or that. if I look at that middle, or that second bullet point, it's, it's definitely enrollment changes. We've made some changes there. You know, and that's, that's kind of a target. You heard the report from Hazel Reinhardt. So, you know, and this is, this is near term. So her report is more trend based, but we're looking at near term enrollment changes. So those are looking at last year's, where did we wind up last year? So, we made some revisions to that. Staffing updates. You know, staff is changing from one year to the next, and those things get updated as well. Finalized labor contracts, of course, is a, is a big one. And then changes to previous estimates and assumptions. That's where a lot of those MDE reports come in as they get updated, as we look at trend history on different things. So, and then the last one's legislative funding changes and acceptance of various grants. So, there's a number of different things that happen. So just to give you some context about what happens in between the time you approve that preliminary budget and now bringing us up to tonight. So revisions this year, we've got a 1.8% increase in budgeted revenues and a 2.6% increase in budgeted expenditures from that original budget. So, the bigger drivers, when we look at the revenues, these are all increases. So when we did the, the general aid and the property tax and looked at those changes, that's a relatively small change. We, when we moved down to special education, that one is more based on, we start to get that information from the state and there's different state reports. That one is showing us to, that we should increase that by about $155,000. There's various, there's a lot of smaller levies that happen. So there's $68,000 of smaller levies that are, that get better adjusted. And to us, we're still on the plus side of that, so that's all good. The federal aid is, was a bit of a nice surprise. That one, we had, the district applied for an emergency connectivity grant through the Federal Communications Commission. And so that was a $374,000 grant. It, it seemed, as I understand it, I think it was kind of iffy if the district would really receive it. So it was applied, the application was put in last year. And then this year, we got, you know, we had a payment a few weeks ago. And, and we're trying to figure out, what was that? Sometimes these payments don't, aren't readily apparent about what they are. And so we found out it was from that grant. So, that's a, that's a $374,000 of revenue we did not anticipate. So that was, that was really great, you know, very, very positive. And then we've got miscellaneous revenues, which are gifts, bequests, the donations, like tonight. You approved $31,000 of donations. And so those keep coming in and we adjust as, as we see that trend go. So, any questions on that section?
The FCC grant, a one-year grant?
It is a one-year grant, and I am not sure that that is available again because it was listed as, as more of a COVID relief. So, that might be a one and done, but if it isn't, we'll definitely apply for it again. So, a good question. Okay, moving on to the expenditure side. Salaries and wages, again, we're accounting for retirements and resignations that happened over last year and new hires that come in this year. And then again, the labor agreements that, that change and get finalized. Benefits, the largest increase there, of course, was health insurance. So we had a seven and a half percent capped rate increase this year. That cap, we will not have going into 24, 25. It will be, kind of, it will be starting over again. But the district did have a cap on that for two, for two years. That was at seven and a half, so this was our last year of that cap. Let's see, HRA, that's, that's tied to the health insurance. That's a, that's a health reimbursement arrangement. And that is a, is a $2,000 or $4,000 item if you're a single or a family. It helps, it does help to, to keep our insurance premiums lower. We're able to raise that deductible a little bit higher. And then the TSA is a tax sheltered annuity. There's been increased participation in that, and that's a great thing. We all know where savings rates are for people and planning for retirement nationwide. We're not doing a really good job. So district provides a match for employees here. And so that's a great thing, especially if they get started early, that time is on their side. And so, that's, that's a really good thing. Good to see more participation in it as well. Under purchase services, that one, one of the, one of the biggest increases there was just looking at trend information. We can look at, you know, any public utility increase, increase approvals and that type of thing. But that one, we just, that adjusted up about $170,000, so that was a big one. Legal, again, that was, that was a little bit larger. And we, we have to go based on trend. You can't always predict exactly where that's going to be because you don't know exactly what's going to come up sometimes. You've got your basic legal pieces, but then you have a lot of other pieces that are, or can't, can't be expected. So we're just looking at, again, trend and history on that. Audit, that, that fee was up. We'll have, probably, that, that will happen again this year because COVID money's created more work for the auditors. There were a couple of governmental accounting standard boards changes. So, whenever you have a change like that, it creates more work in the business office to do the accounting for it. Creates more work for the auditors because then they have to audit that and make sure that what we're doing is, is okay. So, and then insurance. Insurance, we did, we did change property carriers. And I, I'm getting, getting more information. I actually have a meeting with our brokers to get some updates there. But that one, insurance did go up. And, and we switched right after the, the large hail claim. So, the district was looking at that. We're in a pretty, what would, what we term a hard insurance market right now. And that means there's not, there's not a lot of competition. You can't, you know, it's pretty tough to get some good pricing on it, as opposed to when the market is softer. But, you know, eventually, those, those things go up and down. They're cyclical in nature. So, we'll keep our eye on that, on that as well. And then supplies, some additional, again, looking at software and looking at technology and then some maintenance items and textbooks. So that was about 176 in total there. And then the last thing is capital. A vehicle, it's actually a maintenance vehicle, a snowplow vehicle. So, when we have the lighter snows, we can do the plowing ourselves and not, without having to have a contractor come in and spend those dollars. But, that truck was $65,000, and that will be delivered this year. So, again, I think that had to do with the timing of the, the ordering of the truck and et cetera. So, vehicles are, some of the vehicles that we purchase are very, have very long lead times to get. It's not like going to buy a car and SUV at a dealer as an individual because they don't, they're not making as many vans. They're not, you know, some of these other maintenance trucks are just not widely available. So, any questions there? Okay. So, where does that wind up leaving us as far as projected fund balance? And so, a couple of columns, one is where we wound up in '22, '23. And then projecting, you know, a rough, a rough projection where we would wind up at the end of '23, '24. And we've got non-spendable, that's a type of fund balance. So that represents things like inventory or prepaid costs that, that we would have. So they're, they're not really cash, it's, it's not spendable cash. Restricted, those are spendable, however, they're restricted to only things like, for example, our capital funds or long-term facility maintenance funds. So those things can only be spent on those projects. So, that one will be a little harder, harder to peg because sometimes if you have a larger project, it may span fiscal years. A lot of our projects are done in the summer when we're, we're not, we don't have kids here. And so, those things get a little bit harder to peg. The assigned and committed fund balance is, that was, that, the biggest piece of that represents the assignment by the board of $1,150,000. And then there's some other smaller pieces in their donations and that type of thing that are restricted. So, that, that one, we don't, we're not expecting that to change this year. But next year, we will dip into that, like we've talked about a little bit before. So, that gets us down to our total reserve fund balance. And then the unassigned is where we wound up. So that one, the unassigned is changing, is going down, going down a bit. But we're going from 12.9% down to 11.2%. And of course, the board policy is at 8%. So, that's our projection for '23, '24. Okay. And then the final thing is, we need the board to take action on these, these, these budget revisions. So, hopefully you'll do that.
Presentation, so I feel like we're very well informed, so.
Good, good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Great, so we'll move forward on our votes. Do I have a motion? For budget revision?
Am I moved?
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Goes opposed, motion carries. More committee reports. Start with AMSD.
AMSD met on February 2nd. It was our legislative preview session, so it was a little bit longer meeting. We had an overview of the AMSD platform by the superintendents from St. Cloud School District in Farmington. The MDE Commissioner Jett was there to share words with us as well. We listened to a panel of two House members and two Senate members from education committees. They shared their priorities. They focused on student-centered learning. They shared some information on budget, school safety, and staff shortage areas based on the questions that were posed to the panel. The next meeting for that group is March 1st.
Okay, so, I couldn't remember. Thank you. I, I was at that meeting, but I didn't know if that was the last one.
It was. We meet on Monday, so, it's coming Monday, the 26th, I think that is, yeah. I, I think you're right. The only, okay, so let me just add one thing I wanted to call out from the last time. Is that the gala, I don't know if we got the date down, so April 12th is the gala. And that, hopefully, we will be doing something as a school board for that event. And the emcee of the event, we saw earlier on Superintendent Duffrin's report. And why am I drawing a blank on her name? Because it's almost 10 o'clock at night now. Thank you very much. So she'll be the emcee of the event, so, that's all.
It's already on sale.
That's right.
Do you want to, would you be okay including in your notes, maybe if you have an idea about a board contribution or something?
Sure. Yeah, but yeah, something, some way.
Yeah, so we can talk about it. Okay, then, MSBA.
Hey, I attended my first coffee and conversation on Tuesday morning. There were 42 of us in the group. He asked us to pick three topics. I was mostly a listener since I wasn't quite sure how it worked. But we talked, people wanted to talk about negotiations and contracts. And then budget cuts, how do you make easy ones and hard ones? And then the interesting one to me was, the third topic was, so certain school districts wanted to talk about how to make major calendar and time adjustments. And my only contribution to the whole meeting was, I had said our middle school went from six periods to seven. And a few people, or districts are looking into that. And, oh, there is a Twins game on June 15th. That is for anyone who is an elected official in the state of Minnesota, which we fall under that Twins game night. And it's a new thing they're doing. And you've already mentioned the day at the Capitol is March 18th.
916, we met on February 7th. We had a legislative update as we're getting ready for session to start. It was CTE month in February, it currently is. So we had a presentation from the folks at Century College, the CTE program. We currently have 75 of our MADMUDI students enrolled in the CTE programs in 916. That was good to hear. We have a good percentage considering our district size compared to some of the other districts. We took a first look at calendars. We approved some policies. We discussed the building tours coming up, so please sign up for those if you're able to go. We've settled two of our contracts with our teachers and in the office, personnel interpreters and nurses. We have one contract that's tentatively, we're waiting for a vote on, and one that's still in negotiations. Our next meeting for 916 is March 6th. And you have additional information in the notes that were sent to you by Leslie.
I have a question. Do you happen to know the calendar they're looking at? Do our spring breaks align?
I did not look at that.
All right, when you know.
But, it's on, yeah, it's on the website, so.
Oh, was it? Okay, I saw the notes and then I didn't go to the website.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if I'm making this up in my head. I thought they did. I thought I saw it somewhere.
Are you talking about this year or next year, though?
It was next year. I'll be wrong, but, don't quote me on it until you find out for sure. But I thought I read somewhere that it did.
Other board reports.
Hey, I just have a quick PTO, two things. It's been so successful and going so well with kids watching the movie and not terrorizing OH. They're going to go for a third movie this year. It's on March 15th. They're going to show in Kanto. And it's always free. They take donations. But the big thing is, and I need help getting this out, is the PTO leaders are only there one more year and their kids graduate from OH and no one is stepping up. They need... So if you have any Wildwood friends, parents who you think could take on a role, they are desperate for leadership.
I have the Curriculum Advisory Committee report that I covered for Kelly. That committee met on February 1st. All of most, all of the discussion was on the topics that were covered tonight by Jen Reichel. And the only thing I will add, I, she really covered it all, is that the committee meets again in April. And at that meeting, they'll discuss literacy and the implementation of the courses that were proposed last year. Guest first, but it's probably for secondary.
April 4th, I think.
Is that right?
I think.
I just want to take a second to recognize you covering for two meetings for me this month. I had an absolutely insane month of travel, so thank you very much. And that has come to an end for me. Next week is my last week of that. So thank you so much for those two meetings. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Oh, Director Payne.
So, circling back to the calendar, in the 2024-25-916 calendar, spring break right now is proposed. We haven't voted on it yet. It's proposed to be March 10th through March 14th.
So. Good.
Yeah, so now I also have the Advanced Academic Parent Group, formerly the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee. We met on February 5th. We did our usual introductions. We did a nice piece of introductions about what are some ways that you help your child be critical thinkers at home? So parents are able to share lots of good strategies to help and support each other. We have a consistent agenda at each meeting, which is very nice. We went over the roles and responsibilities of members. We shared the glows and the growths of our programming and learned about activities and experiences around the district. I always liked that part because we get to hear a lot about what's working well for parents and ways we can continue to improve. And so it's a nice place to share that input. If you're someone who wants to attend that meeting, it's open and you can do that. We talked a lot about summer enrichment opportunities and those are getting put together and lined up for summer for students. We've had a variety of new clubs and activities this year, including the spelling bee, which we talked about, Math Counts, Math Masters, and Knowledgeable. As long as continuing some other critical thinking groups like Young Authors and things like that, that will happen later this spring. And finally, we did our learning together, which is great because we were working on three critical thinking strategies ourselves. So then, parents now know those to implement those with their students at home. Analogies, encapsulation, and mind maps. So, our next meeting is, oh gosh, April 18th, I think? I'm just guessing. I didn't write that part down. Oh, maybe I did. April 18th? That's it?
One committee that we haven't recapped, I don't think, was the facilities committee when we talked about long-term facilities maintenance. I don't think we talked about that with the whole board. Am I right about that?
Oh, do you want me to give the two highlights?
Sure.
OH is getting new carpet and windows this summer.
And then there's also an indoor air quality. So with some of the money we have left from our indoor air quality project, we'll be looking at doing some work here at the district office. So, all of that is within both our long-term facilities maintenance fund and also our, our bond that we have done. and also our, our bond that we have done for OH as well, for the indoor air quality work.
Okay.